Meeting should come to order, have roll call.
Britt?
Here.
Watson is absent. McCain? She's here. She must be having trouble with her phone. Oh, I see it's. I'm sorry, just a minute.
Is it one of the numbers? I cannot mute it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Four, six, three, one, nine. Do you see that one?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to unmute it and I forgot I can't.
It's not letting you. Oh, there it goes.
Okay. McCain?
Here.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Wertz? Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
I saw her picture a while ago.
She was muted as well, I think.
I'm wondering if she had trouble with her connection. Okay, I want to go on because Rust?
Here.
Hanfelder?
Here.
And you're right, Johnson was there just a moment ago.
She must have got busted cut off.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll watch and see when she joins. Okay, go ahead.
Right, let's have the pledge of allegiance. Kevin's got his flag up there.
There's your.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Public comment. Do you have any written ones, Sue?
No, no written comments were submitted.
Any, any on the Zoom wanting to comment?
I am seeing no raised hands.
Okay, then we move on to the omnibus agenda. The following items will be approved in one motion unless any board member wishes to have an item pulled prior to the vote. Anyone wishing to pull any of the items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item I as an Indigo and item K as in Kevin. Mainly just for questions.
Okay, any other ones that need to be pulled? If not, we need a motion to approve all items except I and K. Have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All, all favor I? Okay, all right. Need a motion to approve I, bid information.
Motion.
Okay, make the most second. Somebody else second it. Chuck, somebody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Frank, what's your question, Kevin?
Well, this is the contract with Elm Street, right? And I just, I was just hoping that maybe, I don't know, Sean or somebody would kind of give us a little bit of a background on this. I know there's been some, some changes in our athletic program. Something about some sports moving from Division One to Division Two. So like on that particular point, I'm, I was wondering, I think, does, don't you have to be Division One to give scholarships? I thought I saw that somewhere. He's nodding. And but, so only men's and women's soccer are Division One now, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So was it, was this a contract reviewed by Gene Hanses at Robin Schwartz or somebody at Robin Schwartz?
Not that I know of.
Okay, it's a pretty lengthy, complicated contract. When I tried to read it, I did read it pretty much through, all the way through. It's, I didn't see anything wrong with it exactly from my limited perspective, I suppose, but it seems like it's, I mean, is there some, is there any urgency to doing, to proving that? Could we maybe let Gene Hanses or somebody at Robin Schwartz review it? Or is that, would that be a waste of time?
I, I don't want to say it would be a waste of time, but I do know, you know, we've got athletes who are living there under those contracts. And I'm sure that Elm Street Housing is expecting payment from the college on those students. This is the original contract that we've had, and I'd be more than happy to have Gene take a look at it for any future years if you would be agreeable to that. I, I would hate to hold it up a whole nother month just to delay payment.
Yeah, yeah, so the payments, the rental payments come directly from the college or do they come from the, from the residents, from the students?
Both. So the, the students who are under, the scholarship payments that you're looking at are full and half scholarship payments. There are seventy, I'm trying to think about this. There are ninety-six residents currently at Trailblazer Commons. Of those ninety-six residents, eighty are athletes. Of those eighty athletes, we're covering the equivalent of twenty-four housing scholarships when you look at the combinations of full and half scholarships. So the vast majority of people who live there pay out of pocket to live there or use financial aid money to pay there, to, to live there, sorry.
But, but specifically for the athletes that have a scholarship, do they, do we pay the Elm Street directly? I think we do, don't we?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do, do, Sean, maybe you or Mary can answer this. Do students who are not Division One athletes sign the same contract? And is this a contract that was agreed upon just between the college and Elm Street? Or is this the same contract that if I'm a full pay student, I would also sign this contract?
The, the difference in this contract is that typically I sign the contracts as the guarantor for the college for the part that the college is paying. And then, you know, all students also, the rest of it is the same. So there's a part of that student sign regarding code of conduct. But in terms of rules, procedures, policies, they're all the same. The only difference is the guarantor section.
So how does it work for the, the people that are receiving a one-half scholarship? Do we just pay like, it looked like it was just five months, we paid four hundred and eighty dollars a month, but is it really, that, is that how it works from June to May? So from now until January first, they're, they're on their own nickel, huh?
Correct. That, and there's a reason for that because we've had some issues in the past where people were not willing to come up with the money. So in, in order to make sure that Trailblazer Commons was able to get the full funds that they were supposed to get from the student, the agreement was made that students will pay the part that they need to pay upfront so that they, Trailblazer Commons wouldn't be going back and forth with them for payment in January, March, April, May, and then the student try to disappear. So that's, that seemed to be the best way to deal with that situation.
Okay. And then, I don't know if this would be the time, but to, to talk about that, but I think we, did we, there was an article in the, in the Telegraph about COVID cases, were these at Lewis and Clark or at Elm Street or where?
Yes.
There's, there's currently seven cases, six of which are athletes. And I believe both Mozell, who's the property manager, and Kevin Karski, who's the owner, are attending this meeting. I don't mean to put them on the spot, but if there's anything they would want to add to that conversation. I know they've been generous in terms of, they do have empty units and we've been able to quarantine those students. And Sean, you could speak to, you know, just in terms of athletic events, practices, workouts. Those have all been canceled just to stop any further spread, so. Anything you want to add to that, Sean? Sorry.
Sorry, I'm waiting for other comments. No, that's it. We're concerned about, you know, athletes being on campus and being in groups. So we decided to not allow workouts or practices right now. We have some cases of students who have tested positive for COVID and other students who have been exposed to it. And so again, thanks to Trailblazer Commons, students have been quarantining in separate apartments that were empty. Some students are also quarantining in their own apartments. There's been constant communication with our clinic regarding people and when they can come back on campus or go back to class. So, you know, the good thing is we've gone above and beyond what's been required by Madison County. And had a pretty good, we're trying to get a good handle on this as much as we can right now to keep students safe.
Thank you for, for covering that.
No problem.
On, on all those questions.
No problem.
Okay, roll call to approve item B, bid information for housing. Roll call, Sue?
I'm sorry, I thought I was, I thought I was, go ahead. Yeah, item I. Wertz?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Britt?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Lori, it seems like if this, this contract is, has some age on it, it could be advisable to send that contract to our attorneys for review.
Absolutely, we can do that.
Mr. Chairman, I can add that we have reviewed these contracts for other college clients. And there are certain revisions that we put in them largely for liability reasons and stuff. So it's something we can certainly do if you would like us to.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds like we need to review it and, you know, get it up to date for us. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve K, purchase requiring board approval? Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And Brenda's second. Okay, discussion? Kevin?
I, I probably just have a, a quick question on this. I just noticed that the Carlinville location and the, the Godfrey Mansion and Jerseyville are not covered. Of course, Jerseyville, we're renting, but is it, did anybody else notice that?
Not, not covered, I'm, I'm sorry.
Especially up at the Carlinville, we have a nice, relatively new building up there. I would, I would think that it has a fire sprinkler system. So wouldn't they be covered on the, under the Arch contract?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. Chris, Paula, I don't know if you're on, I know that Mike was off today. If you have any further information on why those aren't included in that contract. I can definitely look into that. I didn't even realize that we're missing off of it, so.
Yeah, I just, it's not going to affect my vote, but you need to make sure that they're, that they're, they're covered. And they probably are somehow. It's just not, we're just not seeing it somehow.
Yeah, I'll look into that for sure.
Any other questions? Or discussions? Roll call vote on six, purchases requiring board approval.
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Informational items. Lori, you want to take us through that?
Sure, I, of course, items N through Q, including all the grants and contracts, are on pages one forty to one eighty-nine. I don't know if anyone from the board has any questions or needs any clarification on those items. If not, I'd like to ask Dr. Swinski to share a little bit of good news with us related to our medical assisting program and their recent accreditation review.
Thanks, and I'm glad to be here tonight to talk about medical assisting. So medical assisting was originally accredited four years ago. And Shelley Writings is the coordinator and she does an amazing job with that program. And she was granted four years, which was the maximum for an initial accreditation. They, the accreditation involves writing a self-study where you address all the standards and how you meet those standards. And there's a lot of data collection and a lot that goes into this whole massive production that you send to them. And then there's an in-person visit with a team of three to four people. And they're there for two days. And they speak to employers, they speak to students, they speak to faculty, they speak to administrators, they, they talk to Mary Lou Watson about Blackboard. I mean, they cover everything involved with the program. And in our re-accreditation visit that we had earlier this year, we had no sightings, all due to Shelley. And we have the maximum, again, seven years until we have to go back up for accreditation. So she just did an outstanding job. I wanted her to be here tonight, but she's taking care of a sick relative, which is just like Shelley, always doing something for someone else. I mean, she puts her students first, she puts her family, they're so important to her. And she's just an incredible, incredible faculty member. And this is wonderful for the program. So for seven years, we don't have to worry about accreditation. We just need to just collect our data every year and prepare for, for the, the revisit in seven years.
And Sue, can you speak a little bit just to, I know that's been a very popular program. It grew very fast and it's, it's in high demand. I know she's also teaching it on the East St. Louis campus as well. Anything you want to add to that?
Right, we've done the, it's a registered apprenticeship program. So we went through the whole, that whole deal with, with Weowa. And so, yeah, we had an apprenticeship program on the East St. Louis campus. And she's trying to set one up with HSHS, but of course, in this situation with COVID, that's going to be delayed a little bit. But we're hoping to get that, that going. And in the cases, what they do is they take employees that are underemployed so that they, they see that they have more skill and maybe they're working as in registration or at a lower position and they train them and help pay to train them to become medical assistants. And there's huge demand. I think the last time we talked to HSHS, they had a hundred and fifty physicians open for medical assistance. So her program is very, very highly sought after.
Sue?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was one of the programs where they find people and if they move them up a level in their jobs and they get funding for that, right? That was one of the ones, yeah.
Yep, yep. It was, it was just great. I mean, it's just a win-win-win all the way around. It's great for the, for the student. It's great for the employer. It's just, yeah, it's just wonderful.
Well, I know you guys have put a lot of work into that and I want to commend you and your staff for doing a good job on that.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thanks. You know, it's really Shelley. She's just an amazing human being.
And I think if I'm remembering correctly, Sue, we got it in just before COVID and we were able to have that onsite visit.
Right, right. It wasn't long, yeah, it wasn't long after that that everything closed down. So we were able to get it in right under the, under the wire.
All right, thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to thank Shelley? Make sure, make sure that she understands how we appreciate the good work, you know?
I absolutely will. I absolutely will.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Yeah, seven years, wow.
Yeah, it's, that's great. It is.
Now, that's a real wow, isn't it? Wow, great.
Thanks again.
Okay, Lori, anything else?
So, yeah, not under information items, but just a quick update under discussion items. A few quick updates on the construction status report that after printing have, have come to light. So those CDB projects are moving along. The main complex waterproofing, we actually have the bid docs that are being finalized. And we do anticipate that we'll find, that the bids will finally be let. So hopefully we'll have a bigger update come October. And then in terms of the Haskell fan coil unit, brick partnership, our engineering firm is actually on campus this week to finish the design of that. So CDB is moving those projects along and I'm happy to report after a few months of no progress, we're finally starting to see some movement there. So any questions related to those?
Give us an update. You gave me an update on Erickson. You got it for the door.
Sure, so this week, one of the things that was not included in the Erickson renovation project, but we realized after the fact, was just the accessibility of that front door. And there wasn't a handicap accessible way for somebody to open that door. It is, it isn't a heavy door and isn't required, but we definitely felt the need to install a button that will have an automatic open for that front door of Erickson. So that work is underway as well. And hopefully that will be done here quickly as well, so.
Hey Lori, I was in Erickson today and it looks like that's completed, so.
Great, great. Thank you, Jeff.
So you were able to get in, Jeff?
Yeah, I was shocked to see that button, so I pushed in, the door opened.
Good, good.
We haven't changed his keys just yet, so.
Have to pick on Jeff once in a while because he didn't deliver that pizza from last month. I thought he promised us pizza or something like that. Okay. Item U, report from trustee Rust on ICCTA Executive Committee Retreat, August fourteenth and fifteenth.
Sure, but before I launch into that for, and it'll be brief. Anything to report on the, the big project that's been approved but not funded, the forty, thirty-eight million or whatever?
Well, I, I wish I did. It was brought to our attention that there's been another round of projects announced last, late last week from the governor's office. And once again, we are not listed on those. So I'm not sure. I've sent some inquiries to our local legislators and I know in a conversation with Dr. Traska, he's planning to do some follow-up this week. Just to try to understand better the priority process and, and at what point we might expect seeing Lewis and Clark's thirty-seven point five million for the main complex announced. So it is a big one. You know, there's, there's some hope that because it is such a big one, it'll be announced separately. But we're definitely growing frustrated with every new announcement that comes out and, and not seeing our name listed, so. So I will say Dr. Traska is all over. He's got a couple of phone calls lined up this week, so.
Good. Well, regarding ICCTA, some call it ICTA. I don't like that though. It sounds kind of icky. But anyway, yeah, it was like basically just a, a one-day seminar, but spread over two days. We met Friday, the August fourteenth. And first, the first thing we did was, there was a, an optional tour of Normal, which sounded kind of dull to me at first, but it was, it was fairly interesting. And the highlight there was, we got to, we didn't get to go inside, but we got to talk to someone from Rivian Motors. That's the company that, I believe they actually bought the, the old Mitsubishi plant up there. And they're going to build electric, electric trucks. So that was, that's pretty exciting for them. That's hundreds of, hundreds and hundreds of well-paying jobs that Normal and Beaumont are going to see from that and the surrounding area. We got back, we had a little lunch and then we had some dignitaries come through, the, some politic, local politicians. And I think they were mainly there just to express their support of the, the community college concept and, and give us a pat on the back, so to speak. Then the, most of the afternoon on Friday was spent building, in a vision, in a vision building or a visioning exercise, which I wonder what, and the purpose was to, to develop the vision for ICCTA, which I thought, at first I thought it was kind of odd. I mean, doesn't ICCTA already have a vision? But I think the purpose was especially for the newer people to, you know, join in the consensus of what ICCTA is all about. And I did write that, we spent quite a bit of time on it, but the bottom line was we did come up with a vision statement. And I'll just, it's on, in the paper and that, but I'll, I'll just read it, that we agreed that our desired vision of the association is that every community college trustee will be competent and effective in serving their institution and community. And then the, the mission, which is, is used as what, how we realize the vision. The mission is to provide the training, education, advocacy, and facilitate the collaboration needed to realize our vision. And that, that advocacy was kind of, sort of left out maybe in our mission, our mission discussion. But being advocates for community colleges across Illinois is really important. Being advocates with all of the, all of the stakeholders, especially the legislation and the government. And then on Saturday, we had those various reports presented by the president of ICCTA and the executive director. And the, there was actually an ICCB person there, ICCB. And he, he reported. And then we had a very interesting legislative update. It wasn't very long, but she gave a good report on what's happening in Springfield regarding community colleges. And then we wrapped up, there was another optional tour of something. I had no idea what it was. It was just called the Challenger Learning Center. And what we found out, the challenger refers to that, the, the explosion of the challenger off the coast of Florida. And now they have in memory, in memory of all of those people that died there. And that there, there, I think there's forty-some challenger learning centers at various colleges across the United States. And that's, and they're, they invite elementary and grade school children, and high school too. And it have like a simulated control center, like a Houston control center and that. And, and they use that as a learning tool to, I guess, to promote science, technology, engineering, and math education. Well, that's my report on that.
That sounds interesting that.
It was interesting. It was good to, it was good to meet others that, you know, your, your peers and other, other community colleges.
You think they could help us get that thirty-five million?
We, we would probably have to share it with them. Cut it in on us somehow.
Tell them we'll help them with their, their grant of thirty-five million when they apply for it.
Yeah, I'm sure they've heard that before.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Okay. Trustee Johnson, ACCT Virtual Governments Leadership Institute.
Yes, so Kevin and I participated in this and it was four days, a little over an hour and some depending on the amount of discussion each day. The first day, we talked about the, the role of trustees. Topics like the board setting policy and the president implementing, you know, where the lines are there. We talked about, they talked about hiring and supervising CEO. You know, mainly things on the, the role of trustees in the community college. The second day, we talked about, they talked about the role of the board in getting a college to go in, you know, the right direction. Something I thought was really important in the discussion was the making of a strategic plan. And then, you know, the setting it up so you're evaluating if you're following the strategic plan. And that's something that I really think is important at Lewis and Clark and going to follow up on that for sure. They just talked about, you know, the board developing policy, you know, to, to keep the college on the right track. Day three, they talked about the role of a trustee in being an advocate for the college. You know, understanding who your students are, where the money comes from. Lobbying, you know, talking to legislators when you have the opportunity or when you're needed, you know. Talking as one board, so forth. And then day four was just kind of a conglomeration, you know, bringing it all together. I think the actual title of the, the day was leading through policy in a changing world. And, you know, you can imagine, you know, what, that we talked about COVID nineteen and, you know, several people gave examples of, you know, things that they had to deal with in the response to that. And a couple of points that were made is something to think about, you know, is, is the campus, the actual physical campus going to be less relevant in the future? Is this our new normal? And then something that I, I've thought about a lot before this was how colleges, the ones who are thriving through this are the ones who are focusing on their customer and their customer are the students. And the, the term that I used was that they're customer centric. And being from the private sector and being in business or whatever. And being from the private sector and being in business or whatever, that's, I think that's just kind of second nature to a lot of us. But it's not always that way at a government entity. And I really think that's an important thing that Lewis and Clark's going to need to focus on is, you know. And, and they have, they have, but we really need to think about it now as our customer, you know, we're talking about it with these blend flex classes and, you know, just ways to, you just can't take for granted anymore that students are just going to walk in the door. We have to do what we can to make sure that we're offering a product that they can use and is valuable and get it to in the best way. So. I don't know, Kevin, if you, you had anything you wanted to add, but I thought it was, it was.
I'll add, I'll add one thing that I, that I found kind of very interesting really was that these, it's quite a group of, of trustees from all over the country, including two trustees from the Marshall Islands. And the Marshall Islands are out in the Pacific about halfway between Hawaii and Japan. And actually their connection was pretty good. Which means the tech, technology is, it's, it's going to be really important in, in higher education, even more so than it already is.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. It had a wide variety of people listening in and it was kind of a rah rah session for the community college system, you know, and like the one guy said, you know, this is America's colleges here, you know, and we're the ones who can respond in this, these times of crisis. We're set up best to do this. We're nimble and so I thought it, I thought it was good. I'm glad, glad that I participated. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. Action items, approval of grant or sponsored contract opportunities, pages one nine three, three through one nine eight. Motion to approve?
Don't move.
Ready to make the motion? Second? Okay, Dwight second. Any discussion on the grants? Or contract opportunities? If not, rule call.
Britt?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Okay. Item X, twenty twenty Emerson Excellence in Teaching Award to Steve Higgins, page one nine nine. So anyone want to comment on that? Sue or Lori or?
I'm gonna let Jill do the honors. Yeah, go ahead, Jill.
Okay. I'm really excited to present the nominee this year. The Ranking Promotion Committee every year nominates an outstanding teacher from Lewis and Clark for the Emerson Excellence in Teaching Award. This is the thirty-first year Emerson's doing this. It's the twenty-seventh year Lewis and Clark's been participating. And this year I'm happy to announce that that nominee is Steve Higgins, who's a professor, professor of English and Literature. And just a little background about Steve. He's an exceptional teacher. He is respected by his students, by his colleagues and liked by all. He has, in his tenure at Lewis and Clark, he's created three new courses. British Literature One, British Literature Two, and a course called Comics Book, Comic Books as Literature. And Steve would never tell you this about himself, but he's, he's a bit of a celebrity in the comic book world. He's authored many comic books. He's a big wig in the St. Louis comic book scene. He brings speakers in every year for his students who are famous kind of comic book authors. So he's got a real following of comic book fans on campus in addition to those who have him for English composition and who have him for his Brit Lit courses. So Steve also was like a, a driving force in creating the writing desk at Lewis and Clark. He, it was kind of his baby. He staffed it for many years. As the student success center grew, our model changed a bit. But we now reach over seven hundred students per semester from the writing desk. And the data shows that if you visit the writing desk, your success rates in the course are about fourteen percent point, percentage points higher than other students. So Steve is to thank, that's part of his legacy here at Lewis and Clark. I've personally observed Steve many times in the classroom. I can tell you one time when he came in wearing these big giant fake plastic sunglasses. He gets students interested and it's not just all fluff or fun and games. I mean, I also witnessed a very poignant moment in Steve's class when they were reading a very kind of tragic and moving short story. I mean, he assigns stories for students to read and papers for them to write that gather their attention. It's not just boring stuff. And he uses a Socratic method to get them talking about these deep themes in his courses. So I've just seen Steve from one end of the spectrum to the other and it's all really good. Those of you who know me know that in my work at Lewis and Clark, what I value the most is good teaching and you've got a good teacher in, in Steve. To speak to the comment about being customer centric, Steve is customer centric. And so I do want to say, I think there's a celebrity in the house. So I think Steve Higgins has joined us for this call. So Steve, do you want to say a few words?
First of all, I'd say celebrity is a, a bit of a stretch. I mean, my books are available in Reed Library if you would like to check them out. But I, I don't know that any money that I've earned writing them has ever even dented celebrity status. But I, I am honored. I did feel like a celebrity as, as you were talking about me and I did when I was announced at, at In Service. Very touched, but very overwhelmed by the outpouring of support. And I just thank the committee, all of you. And my nominator, Paula Kelso, my colleague in the sociology department nominated me. I was just really touched by, by this honor. So thank you all very much.
And I will say, Steve, in normal years, there's a swanky dinner at the Ritz Carlton in St. Louis, but this year due to COVID, you're going to have to like make your own dinner.
And those who know me know that I love a free meal and.
Steve, Steve, when, when we return to normalcy, we'll make sure Tim Weaver takes care of you and, and so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Steve before we ask for a vote on this nomination?
Yes, I, I have a question. Tell us a little more about the writing desk, being you started it.
Um, it, when, actually it, it had existed a little bit before I came. But when I came, we were only staffed for thirteen hours a week. And it's basically an opportunity for students to come to see us, to get help on their papers that they were working on. And, you know, as, as it grew and I kind of publicized it more and spoke to more of my English faculty and then also kind of branched out to other disciplines to say, if you're assigning papers, send them to us. We can help them improve. And then when you get the papers, they'll be of a better quality and the students will get a better grade. And, you know, as the need kind of grew, we went from those thirteen hours to then fully staff forty hours a week. And then beyond that, the need kind of grew and grew and grew to a point where having a faculty member in charge of it really wasn't going to be viable anymore. That needing to have somebody full-time staff as the student success center of which the, the writing desk is part. So, so I kind of stepped aside so, so that someone else could take control of that. And Jill Lorsbach is doing a great job with it now and Ashley Luster. She actually worked with me at the writing desk when I was there and they do a phenomenal job. And I'm just glad to have kicked the ball down the field a little bit for them to be able to score a goal.
Yeah, it sounds like you have taken really good care of the students and who want help. That's wonderful. That's, it's nice to see teachers do that. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Higgins, I, I believe that, my understanding is that instead of the Ritz Carlton, it's actually going to be a takeout from Carl's hamburgers.
A free meal is a free meal.
I do have another question. Would you be the person that I would, could come to to have my comic book collection evaluated?
I could, I could put you in touch with the right people, certainly.
Jill, do you have any more comments?
Um, no, just thank you, Steve, for all you do.
Yes, great job. Great job, Steve. Yes. Make us very proud of you and the college, really. Wonderful. Congratulations. Call for the vote?
We don't have a first and a second yet.
Oh, I thought we did. Okay, we need a first. Okay, Dwight, a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Now, now we call for the vote.
Okay, Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Okay. Under Y, approval of travel expenses for Board of Trustee member Kevin Rust to attend the ICCTA meeting in Bloomington, Illinois on August fourteenth and fifteen, twenty twenty, pages two hundred through two oh two. Is there a motion to approve the expense?
Don't move.
Oh, I thought it was going to die for lack of motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Did I hear?
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion?
I, I have the comment that I think trustee Rust should try harder in the future to find a more economical place to stay.
All the pop tents were taken.
Had to be a motel six or something around there you could have stayed at. I mean, come on, really.
And we didn't want him sleeping on the street though. It gives Lewis and Clark a bad image, you know? Roll call.
Britt?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
I recuse myself.
Okay. McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman Hyon, I just wanted to, somebody brought it to my attention that, you know, all of the items in the omnibus agenda have now been approved. But just want to make sure, we had pulled I, which was actually the welding bid. But we discussed the Elm Street contract, which was J, and the Arch purchase, which was K. So just to make sure everybody's all right.
Okay. Well, thank you for correcting that.
Okay.
There wasn't detailed on this and I don't have a second monitor to check the pages.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that nobody had a question on that welding I that they wanted resolved. That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, be, okay, yeah. We have Z. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two Resource Allocation Management Plan Ramp, page two oh three. Motion to approve the ramp document.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Hanfelder. Any discussion? Any questions? Call for the vote?
Britt?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
I have a question that when you talked, talked about welding. I saw an article in The Telegraph about our welding program hooking up with North Green School System. I had a question. Are they going to come down here to weld? Are we going up there to show them how to weld or both or what? I just, I just like a further explanation on that, you know, just for information.
I can jump in and answer that. So it's, it's going to be dual credit. So they have an instructor that does welding and, and he does welding as part of their agricultural technology. And Travis, you can jump in and correct me when I'm wrong, which I'm sure I will be. And so they're going to offer dual credit and offer, I think it's four classes that'll go towards a certificate. And then they can come down to us after they graduate high school and finish their degree.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome. And it's, it's all because there was a grant that that was involved with writing and, and it, and it all worked out and it's going to be a great opportunity.
Very good, very good.
How did we hook up with North Green?
Pardon me?
How did we hook up with North Green on this?
So, so we started with North Green, I think it was, oh, three or four years ago. It spoke to us about not a lot of offerings up in the far north region of the district. And how can we bring more dual credit and, and more interaction between Lewis and Clark and that are North Green. And they have a group that's a foundation up there that are trying to promote student education and employment up in that region. And so we first wrote a grant, Linda, and I was involved, involved a little bit with the first grant. And it was to offer CNA classes up there at their local nursing home. And so then this is the second grant to bring welding up there.
That's great. I'm glad they're reaching out and we're responding. Hopefully we can do that same operation with every high school in, in our district to offer that.
Yep, we're trying. We're going to, you know, we're trying our best to, to, to get out a lot of those career programs and do as much dual credit as we can with those.
Okay. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess that concludes our business. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? Okay, all in favor, A? A and I. Okay, thank you. Good meeting. Thank you, everyone.
And everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.